Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present this evening.
Okay, next I'll open up at this time for public forum if anybody's here wishing to address the council. Seeing only the chief of police and newspaper in the audience, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Sure.
I was going through the bills and I'm just curious, who actually does the fire hose testing inspections?
I would have to get with either Chief Hoffman or Director Load.
I was just curious, what entity is out there that actually tests fire hoses?
Fire cat was here doing that.
Okay.
Say, I know they usually.
Julie, your mic's off.
Usually are, you know, reaching out or doing it in conjunction with like other area departments.
Sure.
To save. I just don't know the vendor they picked this year, but I will gladly email that out.
Yeah, and I was just curious. I just saw that on their line item. Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have one item, that's 2022 audit acceptance. If you guys remember, we had to get some corrections made and now it's presented to you tonight to approve.
Mr. Mayor, having received the adjusted amended audit, I would make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2022 audit as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That will stand as approved and completes our unfinished business, so we'll move on into new business. First item is a presentation from Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs. I don't see anybody here.
He has to say, I'm not sure.
Would we like to move that one to the end of new business in hopes that somebody shows up?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Next item is ordinance 1328 and a planning commission update. I'll let Ethan bring us up far there.
Thank you. I think I, that one's simple enough. The 1328, basically, as we were going through, state statute allows for planning commissions to have extraterritorial jurisdiction, wherein the city could enforce its subdivision or zoning regulations within a certain mile radius of our corporate city limits. Halsted does not have that, but when we adopted code apparently in 2008, we worded our membership of the planning commission to say we had to have seven members, five of them within city limits and two definitely outside of city limits. So this ordinance would change that 16101 to basically say that we may have two members outside and just a max of two that lived outside city limits. There's some good reasons to keep that as an optional requirement, just in case the city would ever want to seek extraterritorial jurisdiction in the future. And also opens up our pool of applicants if we have trouble finding, as we have with other boards, you know, there is a greater number of people we could definitely call upon that might have an interest in Halsted or that. So basically just requiring our current language, which says it's mandatory to, we can do it at our discretion and obviously we would follow state statute if and when we ever tried to seek extraterritorial jurisdiction, which does require then that two are on the board at that point. And right now, no one on our planning commission lives outside city limits, so this will bring us into compliance with that.
Did you have anything, council? I saw you over there.
No, that, this one is simplistic enough. I'll get to my problems with it here in a minute. But in this circumstance, I think Ethan has set that out. We have the ability by state statute to go ahead and petition the county as well if we so choose, but it is a process, it's statutory in nature, to allow us, given that we have a golf course where we do and certain other things outside of the jurisdictional limits of the city, it may be something to consider at some point in the future. But you have got to go through notice with the county and get their approval in order to do it at this point. The sphere of influence that used to exist in the state has basically been obviated. Doesn't really exist anymore, but it does allow for us to do it this way if we want. As Ethan said, what I did was rewrite that so that if you ever did, this doesn't have to change again, but it does allow all seven members to be within the city limits, which is what in fact we currently have. And the way it was written before was a problem because it said two of them had to be outside.
Okay, well with that, if there's no more questions or discussions, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1328 and ordinance amending chapter 16, article 1 of the city code of the city of Halsted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1328. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So same sign. That will stand approved. Next item is ordinance number 1329. This is sidewalk code update. I'll let Ethan know, let Ethan let us know what he's done there.
Thank you. As we've gone through and updated, you know, the city's sidewalk rehabilitation and replacement program, as we went through our city codes established, and we have long required that people get city permission before removing any sections of sidewalk from their adjacent property. We though never had that backed up in city code, so this would amend those sections noted 13101, 13103, and 13107 to just include language that says if a homeowner was going to remove a sidewalk, they must go through the same process as if they were building or reconstructing. I don't think it's wise for us to do a complete prohibition on removal. There might at some point be a very valid reason why a section of sidewalk would need to come out or things of that nature. However, as you all know, we've invested a great deal of public money into our sidewalks recently, and so having a homeowner that now would have the cover to basically go in and remove a sidewalk without asking us first, with us having not a lot of recourse, this would change that fact. So that is why we're asking for that particular change to be put into city code, just so we can protect the investments we have made. And I don't know if Brad has anything he wants to illuminate on that, but again, pretty.
No, this one was pretty straightforward. We're basically doing the exact same process for removal that we've had in place for some time for initial construction, reconstruction, or repair. Everything else is basically the same. We're not adding any kind of onus on anyone to do this, but that way we don't have, and I've had that experience recently in another city where people just decided, I don't like it anymore, I'm gonna take it up. And they didn't have that regulated, so it created all kinds of problems for us, so.
Yeah. Well, with that, there's no more questions or discussion. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1329 and ordinance amending chapter 13, article 1 of the city code of the city of Halsted, Kansas.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1329. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So same sign. That will stand as approved.
I believe the representative is from Wichita State are here, if you'd like to go back to that agenda item before we continue moving on to the ordinances and the other, since those will have lengthier discussions than these last two.
Okay. So next we'll move back up to the presentation from the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs. We have representation here this evening to present, so please join us at our podium and let us know who you are and what your program's about.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all the council members. Thank you to the city manager for this opportunity to be here. I also wanna say thank you to the council commissioners and all protocols duly observed. My name is Mercy Umeri. I am a faculty member at the Hugo Wall School at Wichita State University. I am here with Dr. Walker, who is the director of the program. We just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to have Julie Waite as part of the 2023 cohort. The mini MPA is a 16-week professional development program for those who work in local government. And this year, we had over, we had 30 participants who were represented from 10 cities and counties around Kansas, so it was, it was a full class. And we had a great time. We had opportunities to learn from faculty members, from subject matter experts, and from practitioners within not just local government, but those who also work in the nonprofit sector. Julie Waite was very engaged and very committed. Yes, and we got to know more about, you know, the city of Halsted. This is my first time of coming here. So we got to know the beautiful things you're doing in your city. While Julie Waite was in the program, she had opportunities to not just learn from this experts that I talked about, but also to learn what other cities around Kansas are doing within their cities. We, we touched on subjects like human resources, budgeting, collaboration, networking.
Networking, yeah.
Yes, and Dr. Walker, help me.
What was your favorite?
Um, probably the human resources aspect of it.
Yeah, well, sorry, Mercy told you to say that, right?
Yeah, I teach, I teach HR, yeah. That's like the best course. Yeah, but we, we had a great time. It's always an opportunity to learn, you know. For every cohort, there's always an opportunity to learn, but much more, an opportunity to stay connected with your cohort because it's not just a one-off thing. It's now a lifelong relationship that you get to keep, not just with the school, but with your cohort members. So thank you very much. And today, we decided to come celebrate with you. We had to go to Eberlin first before, yeah, before coming here, so we're just like, we have to be here on time. So thank you so much for this opportunity. We have come here to celebrate with you. It's, it's in our tradition, we try to go to the cities and counties where our students come from, just to, you know, get to know you all, get to see the city where they're coming from, and also an opportunity to celebrate with them. So Julie.
Ethan, can you come up too?
Yeah.
Thanks. Ethan's part of the Hugo Wall crew too.
So I'll give you the opportunity to present this. Where's the camera facing? Okay, this way.
Newspaper's right there. Oh, he's got one. That's great, cuz yours just went blank on me. Here we go. Thank you for taking that.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mary.
And thank you so much. Thank you.
Getting to know you guys.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations, Julie.
Well, I appreciate you guys coming and celebrating Julie. As mayor of the city, I know that we put a lot of requirements and expectations on her, and she does continue to excel, and I don't wanna swell her head up too bad.
Oh, come on, one night.
She does always rise and meet the challenges and we are happy to continue to support her in continuing to better her skillset because then she can bring more to the city of Halsted and its citizens. Thank you for recognizing an already accomplished young lady.
Yep, and Julie knows even more now. Clerks rock, and so do city managers.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to cut you off there. You might be getting a little carried away. Thanks for coming in.
Well, Ethan knows, I like a lot.
Thanks, I agree.
Good night.
All right, that's pretty cool, Julie.
Congratulations.
Yep, congratulations.
Thank you all for supporting me and allowing me to attend.
Well, let's move on. We have ordinance 1330, and this is code enforcement updates. I think Ethan's right, it might require a few more conversations than the previous ones.
Yeah, I'll gladly turn this over to Brad. Basically, as noted in the agenda memo to you all, just looking to update those sections of city code to allow our police department, who is actively patrolling and notices things, you know, like weed, other issues of that, to make those contact and kind of run that through on the municipal court side as well on these issues, and I'll let Brad turn that or start the discussion on what the changes we need. And I know we have some questions, so tonight, really, the intent was to present this, kinda treat it like a first read, seek any input from you all, and then look at, you know, subsequent adoption at a later meeting to finalize these changes, so.
Yeah, I would echo that request first and foremost because I'm not satisfied with what you have before you. I rewrote sections of it at the end of the day-to-day. Again, part of our problem, and I intend to fix that with the league, I'm hoping they still have the 2008 version of this because we don't have any of this in Word. So it's all PDF and we scan it and it's a disaster. This is, parts of this have been fully re-typed, parts have not, and then every time I changed it again today, it completely blew up the formatting. So it's got a couple of number incorrect areas and anyway. But let me tell you what it is that we intend to do with this and hopefully I'll present you something that's cleaner, like the others do at the next meeting. In talking with Ethan about this, and I know the chief as well, we've run into a number of problems over the years and so have other cities. We're not alone in this. With, with basic nuisance kinds of issues, primarily things such as tall weeds and various other types of common nuisances. The, the old format in handling that, it was an administrative function. So you'd have a public officer that was not necessarily your police department, nor does it have to be, who would go out and, the way ours was set up, you were asking citizens to go ahead and file the complaint. And in order for that not to be one neighbor in a fight with another, we required the two sign off of it on it, and that came up over time as well. And again, that was very common in a lot of municipalities of different classes. That doesn't work very well either. It's inefficient. It also puts people in a position of having to go in and do this. Some will, many won't. Many will just suffer with it. And then you see these kinds of things, so then some cities went ahead and said, well, we'll develop a public officer that's an environmental control officer of some type, and we'll let them cruise around and do it. Then you get into just how aggressive someone may be, and that may not fit the local community culture, so we'd have problems with that as well. Ultimate solution, and they don't always necessarily find it to be the most thrilling thing to do cuz that isn't why they went to KLETC or anywhere else, but instead have your police department serve as the purveyor of this kind of issue throughout the city and allow them hopefully to be equitable and at least consistent in their approach. And we have continuity in that regard cuz we're not going through different people. Yes, we may have different officers, but they're usually supervised and department's been in place for a significant period of time, so tends to work better as long as they're willing to take on the work. And whether they're willing or not is really not completely relevant because they can be required to do it. So the goal here was to set it up in that fashion. Also to streamline it, historically what we required was, once the complaint came in, if someone went and established reasonable cause, then a 10-day notice would go out to these folks in the form of not an order, well, a form of order. And they would have 10 days within which to correct the blight, the problem, the issue. Or within the same 10 days to come to the city and present to the city clerk a request to appear before you. And you're the fact finders in the hearing body for that, so it's another service you end up taking on that isn't necessarily what you always envisioned having to do either. It's very much like distressed properties, but on a much less severe level. It's not generally gonna involve a taking of property, but it does involve forcing someone to do something. And if they don't, then there's a series of additional steps that we can undertake to remediate the problem. Again, it's laborious, it takes a long time, it can stretch out for a month or two, and by then, we're getting to the end of the growing season, and you've had this sitting there that whole time. So in order to address those issues, what we're doing is streamlining this so that instead of some type of a, an order, if you will, to remediate, we'll be issuing a citation, very much like we would a traffic citation. It will come from the police department after they've had an opportunity to confirm, like they would any other probable cause case. Yeah, we've got an issue here. It exceeds our nuisance requirements or allowable present state on a particular piece of property, whether it's weeds, junk, or otherwise. So we will give a citation that basically still gives the same 10 days. If the individual disputes it, they can come to court. And we're, we're going straight there, bypassing, requiring that the governing body be involved in it in any way. If they remediate within 10 days, the citation goes away and everything is over. The ability I did create in here, at least in the most recent rendition, a, the ability for the, the city manager and/or the police department, likely through the police chief, to give them an additional 10-day term if there's good cause shown, or they're making a good faith effort, or someone has been ill and in the hospital, for example, and the grass gets too tall and they don't have it, they can't afford to have someone else do it, causes that most people would find justifiable. So we're not gonna be draconian about that. But at the point where we've done all of that, if they still haven't remediated, it's going to be on the docket with the municipal judge. I will then, in my capacity as a city prosecutor, prosecute the matter. And as, and the way we get to a solution then is the judge makes the determination on proof shown, and we will use the rules of evidence that, yeah, this is in fact violative of the nuisance code. You now have 48 hours, or whatever they think is reasonable, to take care of it. Or, given that the 10 days have already run, if it's, it appear we've gone longer, if I wish to make the request, I can advocate that, no, the city has the ability to go remediate it right now. And then we're back to what we've done with this in the past, where we do the weed notices and the whole bit. That becomes a lien against real estate if we so choose. My preference in most of those cases, when I do this in other cities, is to make that kind of a last resort cuz again, do we get paid? Not always. And so if we can encourage this by way of simply getting the property owner before the judge with a direct order, take care of it, get it done, and here's how long you have, and then you'll report back here. They can, they're also finable in that circumstance, and there is jail time. I think I've only had to use that twice in many, many years. But there, there's a significant level of coercive alternatives that we have in order to get people to take care of it. But the long and the short of this whole process is it requires rewriting the whole article, is to put it in the hands of the police department, shorten up that timeframe, have it be reviewed by one entity, not multiples, so that the court handles it and we go forward, so.
Does a second offense escalate the?
It can. We have, I have not done that yet, but I have done that in other cities. Double or triple, you know, the, the minimum fine that the court is allowed to assess. If that is something you decide between now and the next date that you want, communicate that to Ethan or let me know, and I'll be happy to write that in. It's, I've certainly done it before.
There's a point where you said that liens can be levied against the property if the city does this. What if we're dealing with a tenant?
Still.
And a landlord, so we can still, and it becomes a landlord's issue to, to get the tenant to do what he's supposed to do?
Yes, because under those circumstances, even though there are some changes along in Kansas, our ability to levy against the property upon which we had to remediate still exists.
Sure.
I'm a landlord too, and I get it. At that point, what I typically will do, and I, I may put that in here as well, if we, we know that we have a tenant situation, we would go ahead and notice up the landlord as well as the tenant.
So you'll have verbiage to that effect in here? Okay, good. Now this.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure they're, they have the opportunity. Okay, if my tenant isn't gonna go mow it, I'm gonna go take care of it at least, and then hit them up or evict them, one way or the other.
So this we have in front of us now is somewhat revised?
Somewhat, but not fully.
Correct, okay.
The rest of the things that I, this one was the cleanest cuz when I got done with all of the revisions, it did not look like something I was gonna bring in here cuz it has all of the different set, you know, the, the side margins and all blow up, and it was just a problem.
Well, we need to, as far as from staff get with, I know, like Josh, Julie, and I just got it answering some questions that we still have just from this draft cuz we have like article four is specific to weeds, so we wanna make sure that the entire chapter, basically, that we don't set up one thing and then we still have two.
Inconsistent.
Yeah, inconsistency of somebody saying, no, I expect the weed. And really, to Brad's point, one of the big things we're hoping to do is to get out of going to the property assessment route because, one, it takes us a lot of time. Two, they usually only add those special assessments on once a year, you know, at the county level. So typically, you know, we have to get things in by August if we want them to go on. And then depending on how people pay their property taxes or that, you know, if somebody is delinquent but not delinquent enough, we don't see that money. Or if it eventually is a nuisance property that like goes to sheriff's sale, all those get wiped away in a sheriff's sale depending on that final price. So we feel it will be, you know, more in the city's interest and because we don't wanna take care of these to run it through the court system where there's an immediate fine up front before, like, we're even mowing the property and we can set that fine level to be what we probably would have charged under our current method. You know, to say, you know, the, the city does not wanna be in the lawn mowing business.
No, no, right.
So.
And I neglected to say that. This actually double, it doesn't double up, but it does. We have a fine and that's assessable no matter what happens. If, if it gets to the point where it's assessed and that's collectible, fine and cost. And then what I was referring to earlier, and that may have been confusing, is we also still have the ability to go ahead and lean it for the cost of staff time. We hope that we'll just get it out of the fine. Ethan and I talked about that last week. And the fine would be set in such a way that we assume we're kind of reimbursing that portion of our world, but we're also still able, if we so choose, to have that lien for the, the cost of, of mowing. In addition, cuz the fine is really more of a punitive measure. I mean, it's, it's meant to, you should have done this, so you're gonna pay that and the cost of, of mowing it if we so choose.
Well, I hope the citizens see this in the newspaper, see that it's a thing, that it's, it's coming. It'll be to everybody's benefit if everybody just stays on task and does what they need to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more questions or discussion, I would make a motion to table the consideration of ordinance number 1330 till June 12th.
Second.
This is council meeting, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to table the approval for ordinance 1330. Until, is that the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Till the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye. So same sign. That is tabled.
Ethan, if we got this back to you, any comments we had maybe within a week, week and a half?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next item under new business is the hazard mitigation grant application. You guys know this was for the Riverside Park safe room and we ran into some issues, and Ethan will bring those to light.
So as I kinda shared at the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before that, basically, through the hazard mitigation process, you know, you, we write a letter of intent for a project, then Kansas Department of Emergency Management, when there's federal disaster money left over from federally declared disasters, they look at these submitted projects and then choose to award grants based on those letter of intents, and then you fill out your formal application, but you're pretty much, you know, in a very good position to be funded. We got the go-ahead from our letter of intent to build the safe room in Riverside Park, which would also have ADA bathrooms, to move forward to that next, you know, final application phase as we're going through all of our checks as far as submitting, you know, our site plans. FEMA regulations state that the shelter must be, or a safe room to be FEMA certified, which is what's gonna be required to get the grant money, has to be at least two feet over the 500-year flood plain. Because we're in a zone that was levy protected, we assumed we weren't gonna run into any sort of flood considerations like this, or maybe thought it worse, we're talking, you know, having to bring in two feet of field dirt. When we actually went and shot the elevation, FEMA has, basically, we would want to build it at 1,398.2 feet. The rough estimate of the area that we want to build it in or would put it is 1,390. So we're talking eight, you know, eight and a tenth feet of dirt coming in, which obviously really changes the scope of that sidewalk. Kansas Department of Emergency Management staff has been great. We've been emailing back and forth with FEMA, trying to say. We've been emailing back and forth with FEMA trying to say, you know, we get it, the safe room regulations are not written just for, you know, Halsted specific. It's tornadoes, hurricanes, anything that's high wind, that nature. They obviously have concerns, you know, because it's, you know, FEMA of what happens if the levy breaches and there's a tornado, you know, you're going to have people in the safe room, knee deep in water, et cetera. So that being said, we have some options. We can pay for a hydraulic and hydrological study of the area to basically get new flood evaluations assigned. I don't know what the cost of that is.
You will be having that coming to us?
I, I can definitely talk to Harland. I don't even know if he would, because they don't tell you exactly what they mean by qualified professional. So I'll reach out to Harland just because he's helped us on some other floodplain stuff, see if he has even a, a cost there. But the city could pay for that study, basically try and get it to say, hey, this site is not going to be inundated with water in the event. I do think we'll probably have a problem with that if we have to take into account levy breach. Because if there was a levy breach, that is going to throw water in that area, I mean immediately. I think if the levy was that far loaded, we probably wouldn't be asking people to go there for tornado shelter. But that being said, that is one thing we can do. We can potentially amend our application to try and get that study paid for out of the grant money. But then that's going to come off of what we eventually maybe could build. Our other option I ask just because of our letter of intent, we asked for, it was a four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar project, which, you know, about three-hundred-and-fifty, a little bit more of that would actually be the federal money. And then the rest is the city, our local match. So not wanting to leave that on the table because we've gotten past that initial stage. You know, we did talk at one point of maybe eventually if this project worked in Riverside Park, hey, it might be a good project to pursue in Williams Park. We can change the location and Williams Park doesn't necessarily have the issue because part of the Riverside issue is that it's just so close to the levy too, that there's no way that we probably won't have to build into that H and H study, what happens if the levy breaches? Williams Park is far enough away. We have recent, you know, the last two years had to put restrooms out there during the summer rec programs as far as porta-potties. You all saw Platts, you know, at our last work session, that there's planned development over there eventually. It's been a longstanding goal of several governing bodies to see utilization of that park. You know, I mean, I don't think it's outside of the city's future interest to build a structure out there and hopefully not have us leave money on the table since we are beyond the initial stages of this grant. But I guess I'm just looking for some guidance from you all of, do you want, I mean, if we really want to pursue the, the H and H study, the, the big issue is, is we could pay for that study and the best case, or the worst case scenario would be we have that study, seventy-five percent of it was paid for maybe through the grant, but we can't build anything there because it doesn't support a structure going there. Now that's being said, this is only applicable, obviously, because we're trying to also make it a FEMA safe room. The city could build restroom facilities there. We just wouldn't. I mean, it would be something we would build at our own cost, not declare it a safe room. So it's not like we can't build in Riverside Park at all. We just can't put a FEMA-recognized safe room, which then makes us ineligible to use grant money towards that.
Here's a question I have Ethan, and I don't, maybe Pat knows the answer or somebody in this room knows the answer. The Halsted Housing Authority that's adjacent to Williams Park, what do they have for tornado safety now?
I don't know that they have.
See, that's what I was thinking. If we, because we're, right now we're considering a, a concession stand, bathrooms, and all of it be a tornado shelter. If we just did a bathrooms over there and extended the, the footprint, because we talked about having some shaded areas, so maybe this is a larger area, but we have the two bathrooms. So maybe, maybe we do go over there and we redefine the use of this over here. I've got some ideas.
Well, but you have to think about the future too. If you develop it out there, you're going to want the concession stand and all that other stuff too.
Yeah, I mean, and for safe room, we're going to have to, you know, basically I want to say it's five square foot, you know, per person that would be sheltered is kind of what you're allowed as far as figuring out how many people could use it. To Mayor Travis's question, I don't believe the housing authority has any sort of tornado because when we got the grants for the tornado sirens, we co-sponsored an application for them to build safe rooms at each of their locations and that didn't get chosen for funding. So we could use the housing authority's, you know, population to justify this location. And to Councilmember Homewood's point, like, I mean, we can basically take the, you know, I want to say it's around a thousand square foot structure and literally transplant it. We just might, you know, be looking at, the big issues with moving it to Williams Park is, you know, we're going to have to answer or pretty much get a plan going to get utilities there because there's not on Corky George or off Corky George or Tenth, there's not Sewer Main ready and rolling to go. So we would have that expense moving it to get it operational.
Question to you, Josh. You, you have kids of the age that are involved in the supports of things. If in fact we had a concession stand over there and bathrooms, do you, could you foresee Williams Park becoming a much more active place?
Is it, is it, I don't know.
It's been more active.
How big is it? I mean, is it big enough to develop it?
It's, it's been more active with soccer, I believe.
Soccer's what's out there.
I mean, that's just.
So I know soccer happens over there.
That's just two grades now.
And so. And I do think that eventually we're going to see some development in that area. It may put something over there a little quicker than we anticipated. But at the same time, if we can do that without losing that grant money.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
I think we consider a generic space that would allow itself to go to a concession stand, but go with bathrooms for now.
We're going to do sewer stuff out there anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
So maybe, maybe we have to look at the, a, a generic building, so to speak, that we could facilitate future activities.
We did, the, the dirt we bought for the Ball Diamond is movable. I don't know if you guys remember that or not.
Yeah.
It's movable, reusable. Bleachers are reusable if you wanted to shift something that way. So, I don't know.
I think.
Eric, do you have anything on this?
I think we should get the survey done, plan for future projects in the middle of town and not worry about Williams Park.
So I think we ought to look real strongly at taking the shelter down to Williams Park. I mean, we have a fairly significant number of people living down there who don't have access to shelters. There's, there's handicapped folks who live down there that can't, they can't get to the learning center. Not only in the, in the Housing Authority, but you have those other apartments on the other side of.
Kim Apartments.
Kim right there too.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a significant number of people there that, that would benefit from this, especially in that situation.
And you said we haven't shot elevation at Williams Park yet, so we don't quite know where we're at?
No, but like, I mean, looking at the firm panel, which is the flood insurance risk map, that FEMA uses, no portion of Williams Park is like in a special, a special flood hazard area. And I know, or Pat, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure the city actually brought in dirt and leveled out Williams Park. So it's probably sitting actually elevation-wise fairly better than most other parcels like Riverside Park or even Scout Park.
What kind of timeframe do we have to, to make a decision?
Uh, pretty, pretty quick. I mean, they originally wanted the, the application to be started and in by the end of May. So we, I mean, we're getting some timeline because this was kind of a, even the staff we're working with, I mean, is like, hey, we hope FEMA will come around. We see what the city's trying to say. But they're like, the chances of this actually being amended is probably pretty low. So we need to know if you guys are willing to engage in the extra cost to get a study or that's what I said, hey, we have a secondary location. It just was later on our radar to maybe put something there. If, can we swap or does that reset us? And they said, no. If, if it's better and it would work, they would honor basically what they've told us.
Do we want to look at maybe all of us getting together for a meeting to maybe talk more length about this? Do some planning and maybe some ideas of what we want to look at over there?
I, I think initially we should see what a cost would be of that study.
Okay. Yeah.
To see if we want to pursue that study to keep them at the Ball Diamonds.
That would help with the decision.
Yes.
I think so.
Yes.
But I think at the end of the day, if it's not feasible to put them up by the Ball Diamonds, we really need to consider this to, to keep from losing those grant funds.
If a study's four or five thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's different.
Let's jump into it. But if it's, you know, tens of thousands, that's something else.
Well, and we could spend the money on the study and then come back and find out that we still can't do it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And at that time, are you, are you going to expend enough of amount of time that we're going to be disqualified from the rest of it? I don't know.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe we get the, the, the figure on the studies, like, no, that's not doable. Let's move forward with Williams Park.
And when you go out to ask for a proposal on that study, you might ask about timeframe.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, because if it's as simple as coming in and shooting some grades and doing a quick hydrology, if that's going to be enough for FEMA to accept, I mean, they haven't defined what qualify, what qualifications the study person needs to have. That's a little unusual.
I'm not just sure if they have like a contractor list they want you to pick from or people they believe versus any certified engineer could technically do it if they have.
I would think a certified engineer such as Harland would be satisfactory to FEMA. I mean.
I would hope so.
I would say reach out to us if, if something needs to be decided pretty quick and get in touch with us. If we need to have a quick meeting, we can do it, I'm sure.
All right.
What was the size, what was the size of that, so I can go out there and look?
Um, I want to say like a thousand square feet, basically was kind of the upper limit. We had a range because not knowing exactly.
And that could encompass any footprint.
Yeah, I mean, we can always, if the city would build bigger, you know, the, the grant money will only go to that max amount and anything over the city would have to contribute with the local match. On the other side, we can always come in under and then basically that money would be returned to some other city to do a different project.
Thousand square foot's pretty significant building.
Oh, you can get a lot of stuff happening in a thousand square foot.
Yeah, you can.
We tried to guess as big as people because when you're, we were writing the letter of intent. I mean, it was literally getting with, you know, grant and saying how many, how many people would be here on a night where there were two baseball, you know, baseball and softball game? Or if the pool was at full capacity and tornado siren sounded, trying to say, okay, we figure twenty-five percent of the population is going to get in their car and leave. Twenty-five percent is going to watch because it's Kansas. And fifty percent might actually go to the safe room where they're supposed to go. So, yeah, we have to take those considerations and of trying to justify how big you're making it. And there are some options too. I, I mean, looking at other communities, what they've done with safe rooms. I mean, this could be basically an open space that even the city could look at, you know, renting out. Not that you want it full of tables and chairs because that takes away usable space, but something that, yeah.
That's what I thought. We're looking at a generic space that can be worked into any several different functions.
Yep. So, okay.
All right, everybody good on that?
Yep.
Well, that does complete our new business section of the agenda and we do have one executive session this evening and I would entertain the motion for that shortly.
Sorry, I'm just using math in my head.
Mr. Mayor, I moved at the city of, at the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, except in KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-B-two, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at eight-ten P.M.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Okay.
Okay, we are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hallstead City Council go back into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, except on KSA 754319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session: the city manager and city attorney, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at 8:35 PM.
Second. We have a motion and a second to return to executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Welcome back, Council.
Okay, we are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on to the report sections of our agenda. And we're up first with governing body comments, but before I go to the governing body, I do have three proclamations this evening, so I'm going to get through those. The first one is an EMS Week proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether volunteer or career, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Hallstead, Kansas, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme where emergency care begins. And I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities dated this 22nd day of May 2023. The next proclamation is for National Public Works Week. This covers you, Pat. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Hallstead. And whereas it is in the public's best interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Hallstead to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Therefore, I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Hallstead, do hereby designate the week May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. The last proclamation this evening is the National Poppy Day. This is one that I do expect every year. They've adapted it to be a very short version, and Julie has printed it out with nice big letters this evening, so I appreciate that. So, as a Poppy Day proclamation, whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower, which pays tribute to the war dead and aids the living veterans and their families. And whereas the poppy as memorial flower for the American war dead is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War. And whereas the contributions are used solely for children and youth and veterans affairs and rehabilitation in our local community. Now therefore, I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Hallstead, do proclaim May 26th, 2023 as Poppy Day in our community. So, that will conclude the proclamations Julie had prepared for me, and takes me to governing body comments. So, tonight, I'm going to start with you, Derek.
I'd like to talk about Memorial Day coming up. That's a holiday for family to get together and respect the loved ones that we've lost. I'd like to let everybody know there's going to be enforcement on seat belts coming up pretty soon, so make sure you stay safe while you drive. I would like to make a comment too about the street closures that I have started, seeing that taking place, so I'm happy to see that finally coming to a start. And what else have I seen? I don't know. I just want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and stay safe.
Thank you, sir. Josh?
I do not have anything. Thanks.
George?
Yeah, I'd like to, once again, tell Julie thank you for her dedication and commitment to what she does for our community. I know she gives it a lot of effort, so thank you, really. Thank you so much.
Very much.
Anything else?
That's it.
Denise?
He stole my thunder. Congratulations, Julie. It's always been a pleasure to work with you and the fact that we can support you in becoming better at your job and understand those things and just serve the citizens of Hallstead is a good thing, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Brody, you're up.
It's been great seeing folks out at the Ball of Diamonds with rec balls starting up for the summer, so that's been fun to see that. Again, congratulations to Julie. I definitely appreciate you helping the mayor improve his reading skills every meeting. It's a great public service you're doing there, but otherwise, just wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend.
All right, now it's the city manager report time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot to cover with you all. Most of the last couple of weeks have been just pre-construction and getting things together to get the Ninth and Walnut project started, which they started construction or deconstruction of the road today. I want to thank all the residents for being accommodating while the road closures are there. We've sent out information as far as what residents need to do regarding trash. We will send out some information of how to take care of citywide cleanup for those affected residents as well. Again, just thank people for their patience and the fact that that's going to help save the city some money in the long run, hopefully inconvenience them for a little less time. Once they get all the dirt work done with Ninth and Walnut, the plan is for them to move to the Cedar Meadows Powers area, so hopefully we'll see that construction just keep on going. Congratulations to Julie on finishing that, and that, I think, is about the biggest. We did have a HEAL site visit with the Department of Commerce on that HEAL grant that we helped co-fill out with TESSA for 204, so hopefully we'll hear back on that very soon. Later this week, we're going to have, with the department heads, meet with Lochner on the Safe Routes to School. We got some preliminary plans from them that hopefully will go to KDOT, so that project is continuing to move along as well. And then we also have a meeting this week that Pat and I will attend for KMGA, which will be looking at some gas supply alternatives. Again, this is just KMGA's continuing efforts to try and minimize the exposure for those daily price index issues that we saw in winter storm Uri, so looking forward to seeing kind of what they've come up with and hopefully ways that prevent us from ever having a repeat of February 2021 as far as pricing. And then also, we've just been gearing up. We have our call with S&amp;P tomorrow as far as getting that information for the rating of the temp notes, so that process continues as well. And other than that, a lot of departments were working on trying to get a budget put together, so that's all I have as far as the city manager report.
Okay, anybody have any questions of Ethan's manager report? Well, since you don't, we'll let him move on into the financial report.
Financial report. Julie gave you the budgeted fund summary. As you can see, we continue to see ourselves improve our overall cash position across most funds. Again, we're seeing gas continue kind of that right around 38,000, which is basically reflecting those escalated gas loan payments compared to the previous year. But other than that, the general fund's sitting at a healthier balance, which we'd like to see. And then VIN money is just more due to timing of expenditures, and then some of the planned drawdown there for equipment. So not a lot to report as far as April, and I think Amy did a good job of covering some of our finances last when she presented the audit. Looking at the capital funds, I just want to note, you see the golf course there showing a balance in the red. That's just a reminder of that's, they didn't overspend or anything like that. That's just they timed their planned purchase this year earlier than the year than their transfer was made, so by the end of the budget fiscal year, they would have that returned. You guys just authorized Sam to go out to bid a little bit earlier on that replacement equipment that he bought, and he has been enjoying that, so I will extend his thanks to you all that you allowed him to purchase that a little earlier than originally planned. But overall, I can tell you just as far as the road improvement projects, as Ninth and Walnut begins to be done, expect that balance to start coming down pretty quickly as we pay, because that part of that balance being so high is due to the fact that we've been planning this Ninth and Walnut project for some time. So, we will see some decreases coming up in those balances as far as some of our capital projects. But overall, not a whole lot to report. Four months into the year, expenditures are still at or below where we want them, and revenues continue to come in as expected, so.
All right, anybody have any questions of the financial report? If not, we're concluded with our agenda, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.